Welcome to the July 26, 2022, meeting of the Town of Victor Planning Board. We'll start with the plans to the flag.
Diligence to the flag. It's America.
I would note that we are one short tonight. Scott Harder could not make the meeting. He did send us some written information by email, which I meant to copy out and didn't. I'm going to rely on everybody else to remind me. In regard to the agenda, Timbertop Tree Parking Expansion has been removed to the next meeting. They want to present signage. All the rest of the matters that are on the agenda are still on, so far as I know. The meeting will be livestreamed via YouTube with text commentating available. And there's a YouTube address, which you can get from the Planning and Zoning. We don't have any meeting minutes, I don't believe, for this one. Okay, we'll go on. Any course? We have one correspondent from Dave Anderson with regard to the Victor Square Retail Edition. He says he can't attend tonight's meeting, but he's submitting the file, and he's got a request and justification for additional screening in the northeast corner of the Victor Square parking lot. A legal notice. Boards and committees, I guess Kim, are you the only one here? No? Davis here.
But I'll go first. I always go last. I'll go first today. But actually, you don't have anything on your next agenda except for Timbertop and any carryovers from tonight, so you don't have anything new.
Really?
Yeah.
I was going to just add that you guys continue to be one of the busiest boards, if not the busiest board, and your due diligence is appreciated and the hard work that you guys are doing. I think from the town board's perspective, the big news is Jack Maron had a new granddaughter yesterday morning. Everybody's doing well with that. And we had a presentation from Parks and Rec. Brian Ellison made a presentation on a dog park, which is going to be going up in Harlan Fisher Park up here off of Line Our Road. And long overdue, and they've been working at it, and the community's pretty excited about it, and they presented last night, did a nice job on it. So you might be hearing some things about that in the near future. But I think that's going to probably start after the first of the year, as they get ready to go. And it'll probably be about a three-year implementation to get that park up and running the way they want it. So other than that, I'm filling in for Ed tonight, and he's out of town, so.
Thanks, Dave. Have you reconsidered?
No.
No, okay. "A legal notice for public hearings appeared in the Daily Messenger, along with under-review signs being posted on the subject parcels. Postcards were mailed to property owners within a minimum of 500 feet from the location where the initial public hearing date of each application. For applications carried over, please refer to the Planning and Building Office." And with regard to the... We've already mentioned that Timbertop is removed until the next meeting. And according to Kim, that's the only one that's going to be on.
Carryovers from...
And carryovers. Yeah. Can't forget about that. And our first is a minor subdivision, Vandenberg Minor Subdivision. The public hearing is closed in this one. It's at 1657 Strong Road. The owner is Jack Vandenberg at Zone Residential 2, tax map number 38.00-1-27.000. Applicant is requesting approval to subdivide the parcel into three lots with the existing house and barn on the center lot. You were here at the last meeting?
Yeah, I was at the last meeting.
And made a presentation?
Yes.
That the middle is going to be purchased by your sister?
My niece.
Niece?
Yes.
Close.
Yeah. So I think we were looking for some feedback from the Conservation Board and then also from the county. That's kind of why we're here tonight.
Well, we have county comments from July 13. Have you seen those?
No. I've seen the Conservation Board, but I didn't see the county. Well, there wasn't any. Okay.
We've got a notation.
But I'll send it to you.
County comments from July 17.
Oh, thanks.
They did review it, and they did it administratively, and she had no comments.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anybody from the board have any questions before we put to the resolution? Joe Logan?
I just wanted to ask about the northerly dividing line between lots two and one. It's an unusual alignment. Is there a drainage or some other thing that that was...
Being why it's the way it is?
Yeah.
There's a hedge row on the east side that it basically just stays outside of. And there's an existing driveway at the road. We were going to bring it just kind of parallel to the hedge row and then straight in perpendicular to the road, but we kicked it out because it gets really close to the house and to the barn. So the kids wanted to just give them a little more room. And the existing driveway there doesn't quite fit in that space, but it would have to get kicked over. But the majority of it is fine.
So that your niece is going to own the center lot?
Yes.
Two, correct?
Yes.
So is there any... I assume the setbacks are, you know, side setbacks are appropriate for that, but are they going to remove that driveway that goes to the north? In other words, not have a loop around, or is it...
For now, no. But down the road, they may have to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I have no problem with the application, just curious.
Okay.
No questions?
No?
I'll say.
We have resolution on this. If I can get it out from under all the other stuff I have here. For the Vandenberg Minor Subdivision, 1657 Strong Road. Today's date, 7/26/22. Application number 02MS2022. Whereas the Planning Board made the following findings effect, or 12. Whereas the Town of Victor Planning Board reviewed the unlisted action on July 26, 2022, and identified no significant impacts, now therefore be it resolved that the project Vandenberg Minor Subdivision will not have a significant impact on the environment and that a negative declaration be prepared. And be it further, now therefore be it resolved... No, no, be it further, that comes out. Now therefore be it resolved that the application of Thomas Vandenberg Minor Subdivision, entitled Vandenberg Minor Subdivision, drawn by Frilin Perrinello, dated June 2, 2022, received by the Planning Board June 17, 2022. Planning Board Application Number 2MS2022 be approved with the following conditions. Conditions that must be met prior to the chairman signing the minor subdivision plan. One, that no final signatures will be given on the plans until all legal and engineering fees have been paid as per fee reimbursement local law adopted November 25, 1996. Two, that before the Planning Board Chairman signs the approved film originals, the developer should submit two copies of electronic files to the town. Copies shall be forwarded to the town engineer's office to confirm that the data on the electronic files are the same as the approved subdivision plans. Three, that Section 4 standard approval conditions for all subdivisions, major and minor, in the design and construction standards be met. And four, that the comments in a letter dated July 12, 2022, from La Bella Associates be addressed. Are there any further on that, Wes? Or is...
So we did have a comment letter, as you indicated. So we are looking for an additional note to be added to the subdivision plan about the other two lots not being approved, building lots. So that'll, I assume, that'll get addressed before my lawyers are presented for signature. Okay.
Okay. Conditions that are ongoing, standard conditions that must be adhered to. One, that the minus subdivision comply with the Town of Victor Designing Destruction Standards for land development, including Section 4. Two, that approved subdivision maps, including conservation easements, lot consolidations, and lot line adjustments, shall be submitted in digital format, AutoCAD 2002 or latest version, effective January 1, 2004, per Town Board Resolution Number 193 of June 23, 2003. Third, that the applicant shall be aware that this approval does not mean that lots are approved building lots. Site plan approval will be required by the Planning Board prior to lots becoming buildable lots and before issuance of a building permit. And four, future property owners of lots will need to perform deep hole and percolation tests witnessed by the town engineer and submitted as part of the site plan application for review by the Town Planning Board. And be it further resolved that the Planning Board Secretary distribute the Planning Board's approval letter. Do we have a motion?
It's all moved.
Joe Logan moves.
Sacka.
Joe, second in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Well, let's see the agenda. With regard to the public hearing, as the speakers are requested to limit comments to three minutes, and will be asked to conclude comments at five minutes. And next is Auction Direct Pavement Expansion. This is 09SP2022. It's 6520 State Route 96. Zone commercial. Owner is 6520 Route 2096 LLC. Tax map number 28.02-1-52.100. Applicant is requesting approval to extend the front lot pavement by 18 feet, by 200 feet long, to display inventory. I should note that the ZBA did address this and had a resolution. Tell us what you want to do.
Just, excuse me, in the gold highlighted portion of the lot, just want to pave that up and push the inventory forward to cover up that space. The zoning board actually asked us to go out further than was submitted, so we resubmitted, and that's the second drawing from McFarland Johnson. But yeah, real simple, just pull it up. We're still 20, 25 feet further back than any other car dealership on 96, as per the zoning board's findings. So we're well within the setbacks, the, all the other exemptions that have been made for the, for other car dealerships, and we just, we'll be able to display 40 to 45 cars up there extra by doing that and continue to utilize the full property.
Does this mean that they'll be double deep in that hatched area? You know, cars, one right behind the other?
Yeah, but this will be row. The fire department's already been through there. The fire marshal's been through there, made sure that we have the spacing for the turnarounds and everything else, so that there's no permanent, there's no permanent buildings or fixtures on that end of the property, so there's nothing to prohibit any type of rescue vehicle from going through there.
I'm just... Are you going to actually stack them?
Too deep of a row, and then too deep, but they are, that's how they are today currently.
On the grass, you mean? Or...
Well, every other, every other row behind the front is double deep, yes.
But those you can get out in either direction. These you'd have to back in one car out to get the other one out, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Are you doing anything with the landscaping berms that are there?
There's one tree that's going to have to be removed and relocated.
Looks like it invades at least part of one of them.
Well, the one berm, we're going to pave around. We're not going to move that entire berm. We're just going to pave around and obviously just not use right up to the berm. But there is one tree to the, if you're facing 96 to the left of the berm, that have already contacted Country Care, and they're going to come out and...
Okay.
Pick it up and put it someplace else for us.
All right. That's all I had.
Al, anything?
Oh, no questions.
Joe?
No questions.
Wes?
Yeah, just to revisit La Bella's review from June 6, 2022. That's when we issued our comment letter, and we asked for an updated drawing, site plan drawing, and it appears that this updated drawing that we have here includes what appears to be an accurate depiction of the existing lot. And so it appears to address our comments in that regard. So there are a number of items that we had called out on the previous site plan, some callouts that were, that weren't necessarily a part of this particular application, and so it was a little bit confusing to review. It looks like this updated drawing would satisfy La Bella's comments, so I don't have anything further.
Thanks, Wes. And I neglected to make the usual announcements, which I'll do right now. Emergency exits are to your right and left in case there should be emergency. Restrooms are out in the hallway and left-hand signage leave. Be sure to sign the attendance sheet at the back of the meeting room, even if you are a developer or presenting an application. There are business cards at the back table next to the sign-in sheet to take with you with the email address and phone number for the planning department. Also on the back table is a copy of the resolutions that will be read tonight, along with the agenda. Please turn off your cell phones or put them on silent. If you need to take a call, please take it out in the hallway. That goes for conversations with people in the room. If you need to talk to somebody, have a conversation, have it outside in the hallway. Any comments from anybody from the public? Hearing, nothing? I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Assume that Susie doesn't get any, have any comments from online? Nope. Okay, I'll make that motion then.
I'll second.
I'll second. It's all in the favor.
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. Yeah, I thought I saw a resolution here.
No, no resolution.
Okay. That's it?
Stand the next meeting.
All right, next is the Victor Square Retail Expansion. Public hearing on this is still open. It's at 4-20 Commerce Drive. It's Zone Commercial. It's 15SP2022. Owner is Victor Square Retail LLC. Tax map number 6.2, 6.02-2-47.100. Applicant is requesting approval to construct a 4,000-square-foot building addition on the south side of the Victor Square Shopping Center. Applicant is also requesting a reduction in allowable parking from the town code, requiring 270 spaces to the proposed 202 spaces.
Good evening. Matthew Oates with Benderson. In regards to the application, my understanding is at the last board meeting, the request was made to try to kind of clean up the entrances and kind of look at this area and see if part of this proposed expansion, there was anything else we could kind of do to modify that area, to make it kind of flow better. So we put together a site plan to kind of show the board, to get your input on what we are proposing for that, to try to address the board's concerns.
We have a clicker right there for your slides.
For this one?
Yep.
Okay.
If you wanted to advance.
Oh, perfect. So this was the original application with the proposed 4,000-square-foot building expansion, 36 by 106 feet deep. And then this would be the proposed plan. It would instead close off the drive lane that comes in and goes to the back. It would make a smoother turn towards the front in this area here, and then we would propose to do a row of parking in this area here, and then another row of parking on the backside, and then show the rest of this as future land bank parking that could be put in if need be in the future. This is where the, where the existing overhead lines are right here, so we kind of wind up with about a 16-foot-wide sidewalk landscape area on that side of the building, just to avoid having to relocate those overhead wires. And then we have a little bit of a larger pavement area here, just to allow for truck turns to come in and then to access the back. Also, we have the correspondence from the neighbor. We'll be fine adding additional landscaping in this area, just to buffer the neighbors. We just kind of wanted to get the board's ideas and opinions on what we're proposing for this one, and then we can address the, either the previous comments we received from La Bella on recent revised plans, or update design plans to kind of incorporate this proposed design.
Mr. Anderson's property is, if you just look at this, it's in the upper left, I believe?
Yep, it's right about this area here, so I believe it's for vehicles coming in here, and then the headlights going in this direction, I believe. I guess there is a little bit of a open section right there where kind of more, maybe in the wintertime, lights could shine through, so we'll be able to put in some arborvitae or some evergreen plantings in that way, just to kind of screen it. So we'll add that to the, to the plans for this.
Joe, you had a number of comments on this one the last time.
I did, and I appreciate your bringing forward alternative here. I was wondering if couldn't just, just had a, like, a, we'll call it an offlane and just come straight in here rather than leaving that turn, so that way you'd be able to come in and go straight across the plaza, or take a right and go down and do the parking. And if it's, if the grade's a problem, or what, I'm not sure.
In addition to?
No, I would say just take all that out.
So you...
Have this go straight into here with a, like, side lane in this area to get cars out of the two-lane traffic area in this, in the driveway itself. Does that make sense?
I know, it makes sense exactly what you're saying. It's not feasible, though, because you've, you've then closed off access for all vehicles coming in this direction. So for any car that would want to kind of turn to coming, heading into the village from the mall, you make a left, and you have no ability to get into Victor Square.
This wouldn't be right in, right out? This would actually be...
No, that stays for access.
Take a left and get in, get in here?
Yeah. There is, it's a little easier to see, probably, so you, we would maintain the existing left-turn lane that's there.
This turn lane here, yeah.
Yeah, so really what we're kind of doing is we're pretty much closing off this section here and just making that sweeping turn, and then you would have the trucks coming in this direction here, but it would push all vehicles then in that direction to the front.
Okay, so this pavement right here is gone in this scenario, correct?
Correct, yes, and then we would have, we would show parking in this area with some then additional land bank parking.
Yeah, okay. All right. I was just thinking, logistically, making it a more direct shot right into the plaza, but you're making a good point about...
Yeah, it just, unfortunately, the way...
Close to the intersection.
Yeah. If this was vacant, if this was vacant land, I'm pretty certain no one would have it set up quite the way it is today, but yes, it's just, it's, it's difficult.
Okay.
But hopefully with the right, when we have, with the right in, right out, it's going to pull traffic here more in the front, so we'll kind of open this up and start to eliminate a little bit of the vehicles there and make it a little bit, a little bit easier. But then with not having this kind of wide-open area, and then especially for people who may not be familiar with it, not knowing which way to go by closing that off and kind of keeping this design, it'll really, because this section here, for now, would be curbed.
Yep.
So you would just then come in to the front.
Okay, no, that retains the function. That's, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Joe Lindberg?
So deliveries to the occupants there, the doors are on the back of the building, correct?
Yes.
So the semis would be backing in, or how would they get in and out of there if you're closing off that back?
So they're still getting in here, so we're just, the drive lane is defined, and then you have a larger pavement hatch area, so the trucks come in, and then they're able to make the turn in that area. We've just widened out the pavement and then defined it.
I'm sorry, I thought you were closing off access to the back of the building from that side.
We're closing off the second drive lane, but then we still have parking in the drive lane on the side, but when you come in, you don't kind of have that split. You have just a single, a fine drive lane here, and then you would actually have to make a turn versus the way it is today. You kind of, you come in and you're here, and if you don't know where you're going, you're more likely going to go straight, then turn versus kind of...
No, the other, this shows a lot better. The other picture, it looked like maybe we were losing that driveway in the back. No, I'm good.
Okay. So the one thing with this, though, would be that it then crosses the property line for here, so that we would have to make a application for zero side jar setback for parking. And that would technically be two applications, one on the Victor Square side and then one on the Victor Crossing side as well, just because since it crosses the property line, I'm assuming we have to do that for both of them.
So trucks could still come in the new entrance, right? They could come off...
Correct, yep.
Here and then get to the back that way, correct?
That is correct, yes, yep.
Okay.
So it's still going to be designed so trucks can get both ways. We're not closing it to trucks, we're just kind of trying to define it a little bit better.
Yeah, okay.
And then if we do need extra parking at some point in the future with the parking we're losing, we wouldn't build it now, but we would show as part of it where additional parking can be built in the future. I believe it's 37 additional land bank spaces would be available, if memory serves. 36, 37, right about there.
That would be on Victor Crossing property, correct?
Uh, yep, that's all on Victor Crossing's property, yes, technically, yep.
Okay.
Wes, and then?
Yeah, I've got a couple of, a couple of questions for you. One of them, one of which you've already kind of touched upon, indicating that the potential need to file an additional application to supplement the Victor Square application, right? For site plan approval to modify, because these driveway improvements are on the adjoining site.
Correct, yes.
And I've got a copy of a plan from 2008.
Okay.
Which includes a conservation easement on the Victor Crossing site. And I'd like to share my screen if I could. This is something that I think you'll need to work around, or the planning board will need to take into consideration. So here's Victor Square, right? And then here's the driveway. So this, this crosshatching here in this area is identified as a conservation easement, conservation easement number one, easement area number one, 30 acres. And we've got the filed easement. Kim was able to obtain the filed easement, and it looks like maybe a portion of your land bank parking might be located in this, so we just want you to look at that and...
All right, we can pull that out and just, and pull that down.
Yeah, okay.
And we'll just, we'll get, we'll put the easement on the other plan as well and just, we'll add that to the plan, and then we can show the land bank to the drive lanes and stop touching that.
Okay. All right. So I think that's going to be it. In terms of La Bella, so I guess the, the previous comment letter that we provided was for the, for the previous design. If there's a new, you know, when you, when you submit a new design, we'd be happy if the town would like to refer it to us for any comments, you know, we can certainly take a look at that.
Yep. Yeah, we have your, the previous comments addressed. We just didn't resubmit, just to kind of go through this, because, yeah, there would be new plans and then new comments based on a new design. If this was the direction, the board would prefer to have us going.
Okay. Kim, was there anything else that we had talked about? Okay, all right. That's all I've got for right now, yeah.
Susie, any calls? Anyone from the public wish to speak or ask questions on this application? Hearing done, we'll have a motion. Yes, David.
Complaint, public hearing?
Yeah.
Oh, good. Okay.
David Wright, 33 Ketchum Street. This is really a question for the developer. Currently, when either Victor hiking trails or the Town of Victor through Parks and Recreation, does the trail maintenance on the Seneca Trail, which is along the eastern borderline of the property? Typically, we park right by the Bassett store on the side, and it's usually pickup truck with a trailer and a couple of cars, or if it's the town, it's probably just a pickup truck with their more. But I'm just, want to make sure that with this change, we'll still be able to park somewhere on the property, whether it's on the side where Bassett is, or if it's at the other end, the northern end, just so that we can have access to the trail.
Any comment?
Yeah, there's no, yeah, no problems.
No problem.
Yeah. It's usually, it's usually Monday night... It's usually, it's usually Monday night and Wednesday night, five o'clock till maybe six thirty-seven, or it could be Friday morning at eight AM.
A space or two to spare on this, like.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, typically, there's no cars there, but I just want to make sure that the trucks can still get through if there are cars parked there, and that we're not going to be, you know, taking parking spots from customers.
Okay, and then the, the applicant's representative was away from the microphone. Did say that's okay with them?
Yes, Benderson has no problems with that at all.
Thank you.
The other thing I just want to comment, nothing to do with this project, but I wanted to thank Benderson. They are committed to doing some brush hogging on the emergency exit at the south end of the property. It's kind of overgrown, and last meeting, they agreed that they need to do that, and I wanted to thank them for, for doing that.
Let me note it. Does he still know that? Have anything else?
I don't know, so I guess I'm just, from the board's perspective, would you like us to continue down this path, do you think, or the previous? That's just, just looking kind of to get a little bit of.
Well, we have a resolution for you.
Oh, okay.
Short answer, yes.
No?
No. Wes, I don't think we're ready for a resolution tonight, no.
No, we're not ready for a resolution. Regardless of which direction you go, I don't think we're ready for a resolution, so.
I'll give that back to you.
I hear resolution.
Personally have no problem with the direction that they're headed with the modification as we asked for last time, which you presented, I, rest of the board should play.
I, I concur.
Sounds like a yes.
Okay, perfect, so we'll have Costas update the design plans, and then we'll resubmit and come back to the board.
Perfect.
Great, thank you very much, everyone. Have a wonderful evening.
Thanks.
Public hearing open in that case. Next is the Woods at Valantown Revised Section 1, 17 SP 2022. Public hearing on this is still open. On High Point Drive, the owner is Valantown Woods LLC. It's its own planned development district. Applicant is requesting approval to modify the June 2021 approved site plan for Woods at Valantown. The modified Section 1 will reconfigure 8.1 acres to accommodate 84 apartments and two 42-unit buildings, increase impervious area by .57 acres, provide related green infrastructure, parking, clubhouse, and associated site layout.
Good evening, everyone. My name is James Cridicos. I'm with BME Associates here on behalf of Commercial Street Partners, who is the applicant. I think that's a fault of our own by having the old applicant name on our plans. I think it got carried through a little bit, so just to clarify. Just quick update, since we were here two weeks ago, we did attend the county planning board meeting the night following last planning board meeting here. They had some pretty minor comments, some specific things from Ontario County Soil and Water on erosion control, which we'll incorporate into the plans, and then just some kind of general clarification questions from that board. Also, what we've done since then is I did provide some information on the trails, back to Kim and Lisa at the town. What we did was identify the trails that were proposed and approved on the original 2005 plans, as well as the trails that we're going to be looking to do with the Woods at Valantown development. For this section, we did have some further conversations with Dave Wright, me and Dave Krista, after the last planning board meeting, get a little bit more information on how Parks and Rec has been doing their trails lately. Dave Krista was very amenable to allowing more trails to be developed through that central area and the other parts of the property, but at a minimum, we will be doing at least two trail connections between the north and south entrances to Section 1 to the west, and then up into the office park buildings, which were what was originally identified. We also had some questions from Francis Rose, I believe, at the last meeting, so regarding the stormwater facility, also some commentary from Keith Maynard on the little pond that is south of Valantown Road, right in this corner parcel. This is still retained by Rinaldi's control. However, it does have a stormwater facility there which receives runoff from the pond on the north side of the road. Just some clarifications with how that functioned, we provided information back to Keith Maynard as well as Wes Petty. That pond is intended to have the pipe discharged at the bottom of the facility, so when it is normal precipitation, it will appear submerged. The purpose of that is to help the water turn over and reduce the temperature as it spills across a very broad spillway into that tributary there, which is a Class C stream, so it does support fish, which is the whole reason for that design that was done back in 2005, I think it was, or designed in 2005 and constructed, I think, a couple of years later, 2012, I believe. We did send out Kim Boyd from our office, who does a lot of our stormwater inspections as well as erosion control inspections in the town. She didn't identify any issues with it. We took some pictures and sent them back to Wes and Keith just to kind of explain what it looks like out there. It's very dry. Definitely, we need some more rain here for that to fill back up. But the drainage areas that were identified by Francis Rose at the last meeting were pretty far upstream in elevation from this tributary. The tributary does drain down through his farm there, but as of now, everything's really dry, and there are no visible issues or anything wrong with, with the facility. We also did attend the conservation board meeting last week and provide them with kind of a general update on how the plans have evolved for Section 1 between the previous approvals and today. You know, they were, hadn't have any commentary back to us beyond positive things regarding the additional plantings. We have also begun some easement coordination with Kim Kinsella regarding the access easement that'll need to be dissolved and then reestablished, as well as a small sanitary sewer easement. That was at the north end of Section 1. It's where the sewer comes in off High Point Drive today. With the clubhouse updates, we're going to have to rework that, and that rerouting of that sewer from that spot is shown on our plans. I think we still do need to work with Kim and the town engineer, or the town attorney, sorry, on the conservation easement language, make sure that we can still do the trails, but we're happy to do that. Otherwise, we did receive some commentary, I believe, this late, this afternoon from the fire marshal. It was the only, I think, additional comments beside the, besides the Ontario County comments since the last meeting. They're just asking for some information on the electric car charging stations, requesting them be placed outside, as well as some building fire access information. So I'll work with the architect, we'll get that information back to Mr. Graham and, and work to satisfy his concern. I don't know regarding the car, car charging stations, whether there's any intent. I didn't have a chance to coordinate with our client on that one, but we'll obviously work something out with the fire marshal to his satisfaction. There wasn't really many commentary back from the board members that wasn't addressed last meeting, but if you guys have any further questions that came up since then, I'd be happy to answer them.
Joe Lindberg, anything?
These, these pictures are the pond?
Correct. Yep, the, the one picture that looks of the facility dry, that's looking at the north end of the pond looking south across it. So the broad spillway in that photo is off the left of the picture, and then there was another picture that was taken at the south end of the facility looking south across Mr. Rose's property, and then another picture taken right at the corner of this looking to the east. And that picture, you can kind of see the grade rising, and then you can see the downstream area where the tributary runs effectively in his little hedgerow, where there's some vegetation there.
And you indicated it's working as designed and that it is still under Rinaldi's control?
It is under Rinaldi's control, yeah, it's a, I believe it's permitted. They have to do their regular maintenance inspections on it, but it, it does appear to be functioning correctly, yeah.
Thank you, that's all I've got.
Well?
No questions, Ernie?
Joe Logan?
The trail exhibit that you showed, it shows originally approved trails from 200... I mean, I just had it up on my screen.
You didn't cat it, Lisa, did you?
They've got, in red, you have trails originally proposed, then you have trails originally proposed on Woods at Valantown properties, that's the blue one. You can't see that on your screen, and then there's agreements as trails recently proposed. So all of these are going to stay or be added to, correct?
Correct, so the, the blue trails are what was presented on the back in the 2005 plans, and then the ones that are shown in green are what we added when we went through the 2019 approvals. We wanted to do those natural surface trails along the private drives to help, you know, bring, bring foot traffic that way.
Okay, and when you go to develop those sections two and three, or four, I guess, two, three, and four?
Mm-hmm.
I, I think you said you were looking at building configurations changes for that one, those two, correct?
Yeah, I think that we do at this point anticipate those buildings being kind of updated to be more consistent with, you know, the final architecture for Section 1. I don't know the extent, if we're going to be combining them or rearranging them. Obviously, the, the elevations in some of those areas of the site do present some unique challenges, so we'll have to kind of tackle them, you know, with that final design.
And we'll see confirmation of these trail additions on those plans as you develop them, correct?
Correct, yeah, unless they, for some reason, decide to maintain the current approvals and do it as it's currently designed, but I don't anticipate that at this point.
I think that's all I had, Ernie.
Wes, any?
So we did get a copy of the BME response letter to our comments, and, and that's fine, right? Their responses are fine, we're just going to need some updated plans to confirm that, you know, the items that we were, that we commented on are addressed, but I don't have anything further at this point.
Okay. David, you want to comment on the trail issue?
After, I'll talk to you. I would just, David Wright, 33 Ketchum Street. I would just say that both Victor Hiking Trails and the Town Parks and Recreation Department, both are glad that we're going to have these trails. I think it's going to be a benefit for the residents and the apartments and condominiums, as well as the general public. It'll give more opportunities for people to get out and exercise, so we're looking forward to working with a developer and, and think it's going to be a good partnership.
So, yeah, I did have a chance to read through the resolution that was prepared. I don't have any issues with it. The only thing I would know is the additional fire marshal comments we received today, and then we'll be looking to give updated plans back to you either tomorrow or probably the following day, along with the other remaining items we typically provide, easement descriptions, letter, credit estimate, things of those natures.
This will close the public hearing then, unless there are any other comments. None? I have a motion to, what's up?
Move.
The public moves?
A second, a half seconds.
A half seconds, all in favor? Aye. Public hearing is closed. Do you have a resolution for the Woods at Valantown, Section 1 Site Plan on High Point Drive, dated today's date, 7/26/22, Application Number 17 SP 2022? Whereas the planning board made the following bindings effect, and there are 17 of them. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town of Victor Planning Board hereby reaffirms the negative declaration that was issued on April 23, 2019. It be a further resolved that the application of Commercial Street Partners, 64 Commercial Street, Suite 401, Rochester, New York, Site Plan entitled Woods at Valantown Revised Section 1, drawn by BME Associates, dated June 7, 2022, received by the Planning Board June 7, 2022. Planning Board Application Number 17 SP 2022 be approved with the following conditions. Conditions to be addressed prior to the chairman's signature on the site plan. Number one, that no final signatures will be given on the plans until all legal and engineering fees have been paid as per fee reimbursement local law adopted November 25, 1996. Two, that comments from the fire marshal dated June 27, 2022 be addressed. Three, that the comments in a letter dated July 12, 2022 from La Bella Associates be addressed. Four, that the comments in a letter dated June 15, 2022 from Zaretsky and Associates be addressed. Five, that the comments in a letter dated July 5, 2022 from Architect Consultant be addressed. Six, that comments from Code Enforcement Officer dated June 29, 2022 be addressed. Seven, that comments from the Town of Farmington Water and Sewer dated June 30, 2022 be addressed. Eight, that a Town of Victor Highway work permit be obtained. Ongoing conditions, number one, that the site plan complied with the Town of Victor Design and Construction Standards for Land Development, including Section 4. Two, two-year maintenance bonds shall be provided by the developer to the town for all improvements to be offered to the town for dedication. Maintenance bonds shall be written by Assurity, licensed to the business of New York State, and they shall be in the amount of 10% of the final construction cost as determined by the engineer for the town. Three, the building design plan shall be consistent with the architectural slash landscape details as shown on the elevations and details drawn by Hanlon Architects and dated June 11, 2022. And be it further resolved that the Planning Board Secretary distribute the Planning Board's approval letter. Do we have a motion?
Oh, moved.
Joe, Logan moves, a second?
Second.
Joe Lindberg, seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Wonderful, thank you all very much, hope you have a great evening.
This is preliminary, preliminary application for Stone Brook Subdivision. The public hearing on this is still open. This is 2PS 2022, 1403 East Victor Road, its owner residential two, owner is Bruce Desamone. Tax map number 28.04-2-62.000. Applicant is requesting approval for a clustered subdivision of 85 buildable lots on 100 acres in the Town of Victor, with 15-plus acres in the Town of Farmington, for a total of 115 acres. This is the second step in a three-step process for a major subdivision. The sketch plan was acknowledged complete March 22, 2022. That's it, okay, you have a speak of that.
Yeah, thank you. Lucas from Marathon Engineering. I've got Jeff and Tim Smith here, two from Woodstone, they're the developer. Last time we were here was two weeks, or two meetings ago, and at the time, I sort of went through the project as it, as it's presented and as it came through all those steps you mentioned. At that time, there's also quite a few comments pending from Wes and from some of the other entities at the town. So since, since that meeting, we've, there's been a number of updates. I've addressed those comments and returned revised plans. And there's a number of other things that have happened in the background, so the, the main thing is that Genesee Land Trust has agreed to take acceptance of the open space, which is, I, I think, a great news. It's been something we've been working on for a long time, starting way back at the Town Board last year. So they'll essentially take land, this, this rendering is, I apologize, slightly outdated. The revised plan should show that these lot lines extend to encompass the pond itself, and then everything else is going to be dedicated to Genesee Land Trust, so essentially remain publicly accessible. And I think there's a plan to, for them to work with the town trails and, and, you know, keep that area beautiful. Another update is regarding the archaeological survey, so on a lot of these larger farm properties, we're required to go through SHPO and assess the property for any archaeological artifacts, so that project has been pending until recently, and it was cleared by SHPO after being studied. Another revision to the plan was to provide access, an access path back to and around this pond, so that's, that's been revised to address that comment. As, as was mentioned last time, there's quite a few comments that we addressed, and so if there's any other concerns that come up, I think today we're hoping to, to get through SECRE, to complete SECRE, and ultimately work towards a preliminary approval.
Anybody in the board have any questions? Joe Logan?
No, I think they've, were the last discussions, and what you just said, I think you've answered the questions that I had, so I'm all set.
So Genesee Land Trust ownership of the, of all the green space then there? So Genesee Land Trust ownership of the, of all the green space then there, how does that impact Victor Hiking Trails' ability to, you know, do their thing there?
Yeah, they've been meeting together and correspondents. They all met here at the town offices, also with the Town of Farmington, to make sure that those two entities, as well as Farmington with Martensia Park, sort of all work together in unison.
Great. And then it, it essentially becomes a, sort of a no-touch type of conservation easement for the balance?
Yeah, no touch, aside from regular maintenance that you'd have with trails in open space. But it's conservation land. There will be an easement over the whole thing. So no development of that.
And how is, how is that monitored then, since it's another entity that owns it? So for instance, if somebody in Lot 26 there is dumping their glass, grass clippings over into the conservation, Genesee Conservation space, how's, how is that monitored?
Well, the, the owner of the land, something like that, it would be between the owners of the land. But in terms of trying to do something on the property and develop it, if it's under a conservation easement, that's at the state level. So there's not allowed to do any development on there.
Very good.
Yeah.
Thanks. That's all I've got.
Yeah.
Anything from Hiking Trails?
David Wright, 33, Ketchum Street. First of all, I'd like to thank Genesee Land Trust for agreeing to accept the property. We did do a site walk with their staff two weeks ago and walked most of the property. What we agreed on was that we would need to do it in phases or in sections. As the, the houses get developed and, and people move in, we would develop more of the trail. We also agreed that for the most part, we will be in the woods, not in the fields, just because it's less maintenance if we're in the woods. I do have one question. These lot, these lots down here, I forget the numbers, but I think on the last plan, those were going to be individual conservation easements for those properties. And we were, you know, looking at having a trail come off the Auburn in this area. And, you know, ideally, it would be right along in here, just because of the embankment, the hill that you will have there, just so that people who are accessing the Auburn Trail will have an opportunity to get onto this trail without having to go all the way down to the, to the creek in, in Farmington. So that was one thing that we needed to discuss with Genesee Land Trust and the developer. Genesee Land Trust did not want to have all of this to be responsible for, because then, like Ernie mentioned, people tend to put things in their backyard and the conservation easement that don't belong there. And they, they do, as a policy, Genesee Land Trust of all their properties, they do a regular inspection to make sure people aren't misusing the property. They said they're, they, they do that, you know, at least once a year and probably more often than that, that they go out and, and inspect their property. One of the things that we did look at was the trail along the creek, Mud Creek, tends to flood, so that it would be like a seasonal trail rather than all the time. And so generally, the, most of the trail would be up at the upper level, along the ridge. And we probably, there's abutments that go across the creek where the trolley used to go. We would probably have a, a trail that would go out to that vantage point, so you could see the history, see the creek, and have a better idea of the, the surrounding area. So I forget which, which they, houses they were going to do in first. I think they said they were going to do this area first. So we probably wouldn't be doing the trail for, I don't know, a couple of years, depending on how quickly the homes are built and sold. Any other questions?
Questions for Dave from the board? Good. Thank you, David.
And Genesee Land Trust is going to keep us up to date as far as the process of the actual transfer of property and, and all that. So we're looking forward to a good work and communication as far as who's responsible for what. Okay.
Wes, anything?
Yeah, I've got a few comments and questions for Lucas and the developer perhaps. So you mentioned something about a conservation easement with the Finger Lakes Land Trust, potential land dedication. Is there actually going to be a conservation easement, like to the town? If, if the Genesee Land Trust is going to own this land, who's the conservation easement to?
There's typically a conservation easement filed associated with the Town Law 278 Cluster Subdivision. If it's open space, then there's not. So I guess there's a gray area of how this is being interpreted.
Okay.
How it's being proposed is that there is going to be a blanket conservation easement, similar to how there's been in, in other projects that we've done in the, in the town. And that language can be crafted specific for this project to allow the activities that are, are being discussed. That's what's being proposed now.
Okay.
Suppose we can investigate eliminating that conservation easement over the portion that's being given.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, maybe it's a point of discussion for town staff and the developer and the attorneys. Doesn't have to be ironed out tonight. So for example, they mentioned, the Genesee Land Trust mentioned something about a memorandum of understanding between themselves and maybe the Town of Victor. If they were going to take over some land, if they were going to take acceptance or own this land, they wanted to enter in some form of memorandum of understanding. Do you know, has, has the Genesee Land Trust offered at this point a, a draft of that memorandum of understanding? They provided us with a sample from another community, which kind of gave us the flavor of what it might look like. But have they provided anything to the town? Have we received anything?
Yeah. The point at which we are in the process is that they've currently just accepted the offer. So the preparation, all those documents, it's going to be over the summer and probably into the fall before we formalize it.
Okay. Now, there is, there's segment, the green segment north of this development, there was some discussion at one point about maybe the town taking acceptance of that land. And is, is it my understanding now, based on what you've indicated tonight, that the Genesee Land Trust has indicated that they would be willing to take ownership of all of the land, including the portion that's to the north?
That is correct, based on the feedback we've received from the town, that they're not interested in taking it.
All right. All right. Another item, not necessarily related to ownership of that open space, but there was a note here from the Town of Farmington about a, a request for the developer to provide an access road, a minimum of 12 feet wide, crushed stone from Sunray Crest right of way to two of the manholes, which I believe are kind of in the back or in that.
Yeah, they're on the trunk sewer, which is back along here. You're, you're right. We got that comment letter yesterday.
Yeah. Is that something that?
We'll, we'll provide an easement. But this, this project's not related to those. So I'll be responding to that, to the sewer department in writing. But yeah, we're okay to provide an easement for the future access and maintenance of that. But a roadway back there, I don't think.
And so just to clarify for the record, and my understanding is that this project, your project, is not tying in, the sanitary sewer conveyance is going to East Victor Road, right?
Yeah.
Right to PS 7, and it's not going to this?
Yeah, it won't, it won't go through this region.
Yeah.
The only relation that sewer has to our project is that it's on the property.
Okay.
And that by this land being transferred, not to the Town of Victor, you know, it's an opportunity to get access to it, because the, the access there currently is not ideal. So we'll provide the easement to, to allow for that.
All right.
I was going to ask Wes about that access. I mean, how do they get there now? Is there a road or any kind of?
They, I think they get in a canoe.
Mode area even?
I think they get in a canoe.
Canoe.
No, they rode out.
Tim's got an answer, I can tell.
Well, Keith walked it with the Town of Farmington not too long ago. They parked at the end of Sunray Crest and walked back. There's not, and Jeff probably knows better, but there's not a mode area there that they can get to it easily now, currently.
Bushwalking back there, basically, you know? So you're going from right here, right?
Yes.
Back up in and?
That's how they got to it. I don't, that's, that's how he got to it.
How, which side of the creek?
Well, they're on both sides of the creek, actually.
Oh, okay. So they crossed?
But the two, the two in, in question are on this southern side. And then it crosses the street and goes up here towards McMahon, I think it is. But yeah, I guess my point was simply that whether they walk this way, there, there's no easement there to allow anybody to access that. This is Town of Farmington land. So technically, they could go back to there, but.
What's Town of Farmington land?
Victor.
Oh, sorry, Town of Victor.
I was going to say, I don't think they're invading.
Behind Boca Park Estates, yeah.
They haven't annexed anything, right?
All right. As far as Lobella's review, we haven't been able to fully review the updated plan set in response to comments yet. So we haven't prepared a, a Part Two EAF for tonight.
Okay.
But that's something that we'll be working on. And we did take a look at your response to, for example, additional information on traffic. And we want to just touch on that a little bit with offline, right? Not here at this meeting, but just to make sure we're, we're covering our bases there. But we have more work to do in order to, you know, proceed with Seeker. I, not necessarily thinking that we wouldn't be able to address something or go through Part Two at the next meeting. You know, that's very possible. So.
Okay, I'll follow up with you and then come in days to make sure that we cover those bases.
Yeah.
I was going to ask Wes, if the next meeting is quite light with two, at least two items right now, this would be a third, that might be a good opportunity to hash out those little nuances of a seek Part Two.
Yeah. Yep. Oh, and maybe the developer will, might want to chime in on this, but I, I, there was some talk about the, a potential trail for these residents to get to the Auburn Trail, connecting trail between these residents and the Auburn Trail. There's some extreme elevation changes in these backyards. And I don't, you know, I, I would certainly defer to the trail experts in Brian Emelson. It might be very difficult to do that sort of thing. And there will be a trail connection, my understanding, at least via sidewalk from this road. There'll be a sidewalk from here to the Auburn Trail. So that's one opportunity for residents in this area to access the Auburn Trail, so they can get there from the sidewalk. Just an observation on my, my point. That's all I've got.
Yeah, Wes, Jeff Smith with Woodstone. We just received that comment from Genesee Land Trust today and an email from Lorna Wright. And, and what David also mentioned, we don't have any problem potentially working with them in terms of carving an additional area out that would go to the Genesee Land Trust rather than backyard easements. That in itself is not an issue with us. I, I don't disagree that, that some of the topography there is, is, is quite prohibitive. Possibly David has studied it enough to know where they plan on putting the trails, and which is fine. So we're open to that discussion and, and we only just received it by email today from Lorna Wright. But it was excellent news, because we've worked hard at trying to secure someone that would care for the property in a way that I always thought should be, as a publicly accessible asset for the town. So we're very pleased with it. Their board just approved it within the last week. And there are a number of things we have to work through. We understand that in terms of conservation easements and open space and ownership rights and all that good stuff. But I, I think there'll be plenty of time to do that and possibly through draft resolutions that they've dealt with previously. But I did want to go back, and I, and I hope everyone understands, we're very open to providing the sanitary sewer easement for maintenance of the Farmington sewer main. But it was very clear, they did not want us to tie in there. And in fact, we are, therefore, Victor is more heavily dependent on pump stations for the subdivision. And, and as Kim noted, they haven't had the right of, of access other than by canoe for that main. So I think it's a good thing that we're going to give them land access. I think Dave Valentin, who's one of the, the family, one of the owners now, has been mowing occasional trails that do go down to that sewer area. So, but there really has been no vehicular access over the last 20-plus years. So we're happy to give them a deeded access, but we would not be proposing to give them a driveway as well.
Any comments from the public or questions?
Again?
David, you're starting to wear out your welcome here.
Sorry. But just regarding the, the access on the Auburn to these trails, it is a, a pretty good sized hill, maybe 18, 20 foot high. And that's why we would want a, a ramp. We would put a bench cut or a cut and fill, if you will, on the side slope. Both Victor Hiking Trails, Adam Ritz from the town, as well as Genesee Land Trust, we walked that a couple of weeks ago. It is definitely doable, not a problem. It won't be six or eight foot wide. It'll, it'll be, you know, just a, a narrower tread, if you will, but it'll still be accessible for bicycles as well as pedestrians. But it does require to come in in this area and, and not down here. Down here, you know, anything can be done, but it's much more difficult down in this area than it would be up in this area. And they, currently, there's access down here, but again, it's down in the area that gets flooded. So we're just trying to provide access to these trails for, if, the general public, if you will, if they're out on the Auburn and they want to see the creek in this area. I think that's it.
Susan, anything? Not hearing anything. Anybody else wants to speak or ask questions? I guess we'll put this on the table for now, because it's going to come back. And we'll leave the public hearing open.
Thank you.
What was that all about? We get it. All right. Next is preliminary application for South Gate Hills Phase Three on East Victor Road, Zone Residential Two, 3PS 2022. The owner is BRW of Grease LLC, tax map number 28.04-1-48.000. Applicant is requesting approval for a clustered subdivision of 10 single fam, single family lots on an 11-acre parcel. This is the second step in a three-step process for a major subdivision. Sketch plan was acknowledged complete on August 10, 2021.
Good evening. Thanks, Sweetrock with BME. Jerry Watkins is with me from BRW of Grease LLC. The applicant, we're here tonight to talk about preliminary plans for South Gate Section Three, that's located on the east side of East Victor Road, south of the Auburn Trail. This is Section Two, or this is Section One of South Gate. Section Two of South Gate is going on right down here currently. Section two of South Gate is going on right down here currently. So section three is the next 10 lots that we're proposing. The lot standards are consistent with what we've done in section one and section two. The plan has changed since the sketch plan. I sort of brought the sketch plan here, just so you can remember what it looked like before. I think we've worked to improve it. Originally, we were looping that road around based on the actual property itself with the topo and the constraints. There's an existing pond up in here, and pretty good grade change and a lot of wooded area here. We revised the plans to just one entrance with 10 lots, two with a cul-de-sac, and we were able to maintain the wooded area along the Auburn Trail. As originally approved, we were proposing the parking area near the Auburn Trail with the trail connection to the, to the Auburn Trail there. That's sort of consistent with what we showed originally. We reduced the number of parking from what was originally shown. As I said, the lot standards are consistent with the original, with section one and section two. Sewer, we're bringing public sanitary in off of East Victor Road, public water in off of East Victor Road to serve the sites. Drainage, we actually have gravelly soils, sort of consistent with what we had in section one, so we're using the gravelly, the gravelly soils to infiltrate for the stormwater management. We actually don't really have, our calculations show we don't have a discharge from the site. Everything's being infiltrated. We've just provided for emergency relief a lot to the north and along East Victor Road, along the east side, in case, for whatever reason, the drainage would overflow out of that pond. So we made the application. The property is 11 acres in size. We went through the rezoning to change the overlay district with the town board, and that's when we moved the lots around, and this is consistent density-wise with what was originally shown on the sketch plan that was approved. The 50% open space we're showing through conservation easements, and we're showing this open space area A here. We can talk about it, but our thoughts are we'd like to offer that in dedication to the town with the parking area, the trail, the pond, which is that open space area that's sort of like on that corner there. The, we've been to the county planning board, which we've, we've worked, we've provided written responses. We went to the county planning board, we've been to the conservation board. We got all staff comments, we got Wes's comments from LaBella, provided all written responses to all those. We didn't, we think we can work to make sure we address all of those. There are some also comments from Parks and Rec and the trail, and I think we've agreed to, to work with them to make sure we do a stone dust trail connection off of that parking area. Some other, some other thoughts, but this is our first, we're first time sort of changed plans, so we went over it with the conservation board. I think they really liked what we did to change it, to try to keep that pond, the existing pond, to maintain it and try to keep the vegetation along the Auburn Trail. So that's sort of what we did to work on to get the plan to get here. I think we've, like I said, Jerry is here to help answer any questions we got. We also know that the pump station is still out there, that we'll need to, the timing to work with the pump station upgrades that are required for the pump station. I forget the number.
Seven.
Seven. Which is, we knew when we did the last section that that was still something that needed to get done, so. With that, I think I will try to, I want to get the planning board's feedback on our changes to the plans since the sketch plan, and then Jerry and I are here to answer any questions you might have.
Is Joe Lumbek back, anything?
Not yet, I'm still thinking.
I'll go down. The next person is Joe Logan.
So Link, what if we put your sidewalk instead of on the east side of the cul-de-sac road to the west side, and then tied it into the walkway or to the access road that goes to the stormwater retention pond through the space between the cul-de-sac and that trail? So if I'm describing it right, instead of having this sidewalk over here, you'd have it on the west side, and tie in right here, and then you could access, these people here wouldn't have to walk all the way down, and then this way, they could just tie in right here, and either you have a crossing, like you were gonna do with the other layout, I think.
There's a lot, they got, they got a lot of grade there next to that infiltration.
In here, I'm just, I'm looking at it as, there's, the contour lines are parallel to what I'm suggesting.
Right, but they're like, we'd have to, well, I mean, we can look, we can look at doing a connection.
I mean, if you slide the retention pond six, eight feet to the north, then you could make it fit. So you're asking for comments, that's what you're getting.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting, no problem. Um, the reason, I mean, the sanitary and storm are on the other side. So, and the wa, so the water, the sidewalk's on the water side, so that you don't have manholes on the sidewalk. So the sanitary comes up, and that's the sidewalk. So the sanitary is designed on the.
So right now, they're just shown, they're depicted, it's not actually in the ground, right? So could you flip them? Put the water on the other side, and put the sidewalk on the other side, and put the sanitary on the east side, for instance?
Or we could, can we just do a crosswalk and cross the sidewalk there?
Or you could do that.
Okay. We certainly will look at it.
I'm just looking for connectivity, and rather than running people all the way over here and then down, crossing the road there, you can just make a quick shortcut and cross there and go back again. I mean, I'd prefer actually to have the sidewalk on the east side of the road as well from there, but.
Well, we just put the side, we're just putting in the sidewalk from here to here with section two, right?
Trying to be considerate. But there are ways to, I mean, you can walk on the shoulder, but, you know, there's the sidewalk, which would be making sure you, people are safer doing that.
So some unaccessed from the cul-de-sac, try to get them to that pond, right?
Yeah. Otherwise, I mean, I like cul-de-sacs, it's a nice quiet street, you don't have to worry about the double entrance from the road, so I think it's a good change.
Thank you.
All I got.
Nothing at this time.
Have you thought about it?
No, nothing at this time.
Okay.
I do have, just to follow up on Joe's, Joe's point, or an observation that I think I made on the plans. So that, that access road to the stormwater management facility, that's gonna be covered with grass, right? So you've got kind of a subbase of stone of some form, and it's not actually gonna be a gravel road. I'm not saying that that's a, that, that can't be worked around if you were looking for a pedestrian connection, it's just an observation I made.
I was gonna say, in the spirit of trails, you could make it stone dust, and don't have to have it as wide as a driveway necessarily, but.
But I think we're not worried about getting people out of here. I think we're worried about discouraging people to come in a little bit, too, you know? We're, we want to get, we want to get, you know, residents in here, but we also don't want to encourage, you know, people coming into the neighborhood, right?
I'm trying to figure out where they're coming from.
The neighbor come across the street.
Yeah, right, they're gonna go, right.
Hey, I'm just, I'm just, you know.
Honestly, I'm not worried about that.
You're not worried about that?
No.
Jerry Watkins at Reedman and BRW of Greece. So the way I'm, I'm looking at it, people are out there to get some exercise and connect to the neighborhood, so that's why we didn't go the route that you're thinking, Joe. We, we wanted them to walk through the neighborhood, walk across the street, and be able to go either on the west side of the road or through the, this first section to get exercise, which is what they're doing ultimately, and meet their neighbors, have a neighborhood, so.
Okay, I can see that point. I honestly think it would be good for circulation to, to allow that, you know, to put that little connection in, but.
Okay. We'll definitely, we'll definitely look at it and talk about it.
So a couple of other comments that I have, Ernie, and Link, you pointed this out, I think it was something that I missed. So for Seeker, I had initially indicated this might be an unlisted action, but I think you're right, based on being a realty subdivision, they require coordinated review and, and classification as type one action. So I can work with Kim and town staff on, on getting a coordinated, you know, getting those notices out to involved agencies. I don't, we don't necessarily need a resolution to do that. We can, that can just be done administratively, so that we can get that.
Yeah, that's, I think the health, that's like, the health department has gone back and forth on that forever, and they brought that up again with section two that we did and unlisted, but they're, the health department is saying that any subdivision is a type one action.
Yeah.
Which I didn't know that we were doing that. But, um, so yeah, I guess if we could just demarc, or if we just need to act that the planning board wants to deem themselves as not, well, you know, as, as acknowledging that they're intent to be lead agents so that we can send out the 30-day notices.
Yeah, we can get that going.
You know, just so that keeps going with the process, but.
Yep.
Yeah, that's, that's sort of new, but.
So the other item I just wanted to, it, this is not a big issue, and I wanted to talk about the conservation easement configuration that I mentioned in our, in our letter dated July 22nd. So there's a big chunk of the conservation easement up in this part of the, the development, right?
Yep.
On these two properties, and then this, this whole large, large thing here. Just for the planning board information, there's a, they're also proposing a 40-foot wide conservation easement here at the end of their, the backyards of these particular lots here. And then there's also a chunk of conservation easement in this little triangle over here. And I'm just, I'm just thinking about usability for potential future lot owners. Thank you. That's a, that's actually a very helpful graphic, because it depicts the, what I believe to be the setback line, which is also, happens to be co-terminous with the conservation easement based on the subdivision plans that were submitted. So these backyards here, they will have, as, as the plan shows, there's conservation easement markers at the intersection of each of these, the conservation easement line and the property line. So, and I, and I understand why you're, why you're doing that, right? You're, you're trying to achieve that 50% open space requirement for major subdivisions. I'm just wondering if there's, there's an avenue available whereby, you know, we don't, this doesn't seem to be connecting a much larger area, other than, you know, this chunk up here to this chunk down here. But is, do, is the planning board interested, or is the town interested in having a conservation easement area in this location? Maybe it's not a big deal, it's just an observation that I made. Certainly makes their backyards a lot smaller.
I was gonna say, I agree with that, Joe, and Wes, thanks for bringing that forward. This parcel at the bottom, I forget which number it is, but, I mean, you could create a wider easement here, get rid of these, and cut some of it across this way, too, I don't know.
There is a, the easement does cut like across here now.
Does it?
Yeah.
Okay, it doesn't show.
We'd have to look at, but we could maybe relocate, you know, maybe a little bit over here, where we're trying to keep this woods and maybe try to get rid of.
Yeah.
We'd have to look and see, I'm just trying to balance where to put, you know, the 50%.
But Wes, just a technical question, is does, in order to maintain open space, does it have to be a conservation easement?
No, the answer to that question is no. It does not have to be a conservation easement. The town code allows for three scenarios. One option is a conservation easement, another option is dedication of land to the town, a third option is simply some other means that is acceptable to the planning board. So just for conversation purposes, possibly the mere presence of having that rear lot line setback, or that rear building setback, you're preserving that as open space anyway. The zoning setback requirement itself is preserving open space. So maybe, so maybe there's some shading added to the subdivision plan indicating that, you know, even though there's not a conservation easement in that location, the setback itself is providing for that open space.
Again, I would have no issue with that third option, and it could be maintained, grass cut.
They can mow it, right? Yeah. They could use it for the, you know.
Just can't put a shed on it, or any other.
Or how about a pool? I put that in.
Well, it would be, it would be a setback, so it wouldn't, it wouldn't allow for it without.
Yeah, I mean, this one house right here, there's no space at all. I mean, that's what, 30 feet or something, at best? You need, I think that property, you'd want to have it opened up, at least for a yard, to be able to mow it, and either that, you take that cul-de-sac and you shift it towards the road, but.
Just, just as a conceptual idea, maybe 40% of the land is in conservation easement, the other 10% is somehow accounted for via setbacks.
Yeah, that's by default.
You know, I haven't fully thought that through, to see whether, you know, that's a feasible method to go forward with, but I think it might be worthy of consideration. I don't know if town staff might have some comments, if they, after they've had the opportunity to consider that idea, right? But maybe it's something we can look at.
So it sounds like Link was gonna look at that, too, and maybe he comes up with a different alternative, but.
Well, you know, I'd like that, we like the, you know, we agree with the idea, obviously, what we're trying to do, so.
I think that's very restrictive if you, if you put that in there as a conservation easement for those houses. Like I said, unless you shift the cul-de-sac or you do something else to add more backyard.
Yeah, I'm also trying to keep these, you know, also trying to make sure we keep some space, you know, on the front, too, so we can look at that.
Okay. That's good, Wes, good point.
Any questions or comments from the crowd? Who are you?
Busy guy tonight, Dave.
Yeah, it's a triple header. Just wanted to comment that we did review it with Town Parks, and I think, you think you're correct, the adults will want to go out on the sidewalk. I'm, I'm glad to see that there's a sidewalk in the cul-de-sac, a crosswalk across East Victor Road, and sidewalk along East Victor Road up to the, well, up to both of the South Gate Hills developments. But I know the kids are not gonna go the long way, they're gonna go the short way. So the 14, 15-year-olds that are on their bike, they're gonna get out to the road as quick as they can and, and go up to the Auburn, because they're going over to Mertensia Park for their activities. So I think it'd be beneficial to the residents that live there to have a safer way to get to the Auburn. The, the town is not interested in a town, official town trail easement, because it's only 10 houses, it's not a, not a big development. They're not looking for more work, more trails, but both the town and Victor Hiking Trails feel there will be a benefit to those residents if there was a safer access to the Auburn. Sidewalks are great, good to see that they're in there, but I just, you know, from experience, I know that younger folks are just interested in getting to their, their destination, not so much out for a walk to meet the neighbors.
On their dirt bikes.
Pardon?
On their dirt bikes.
They go on the road.
Yeah.
Go all over the place, believe me.
Thank you.
Hey, thanks, Dave. Anybody else? We will table this for that one, and come back another night.
Okay, thanks for your feedback. We'll work on addressing the comments and come back and see you.
Okay, thanks, Mike. That was the last agenda item, so there's only one thing left, and that is to entertain a motion to adjourn. Joe Lumbek moves.
My second.
Poken second, solid favor.